One will have a seat, we'll get started.
Senior Councilor.
We will bring the City Council's regular meeting to order, this is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, and if you'll all stand with me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, you may all be seated. Alright, thank you very much, we don't need to do the roll call, we're all here, no one's presentations, we have three presentations tonight, we're gonna come down there and we're gonna start out with K-9 Ghost. Forgive my back, please. Alright, here we have, this is a proclamation for thanking K-9 Ghost for his service to the city of West Melbourne, whereas K-9 Ghost, a German shepherd, became a member of the West Melbourne Police Department on September 24th, 2019, and whereas Ghost was certified in patrol and narcotics detection, and he and Sergeant Sells were certified through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement as an operational K-9 team, and whereas the team maintained a consistent and impactful service record over the last several years, and together they completed initial training and ongoing weekly training of almost 1,800 hours over their period of service as a team, and whereas during their service to the community, they participated in 185 different deployments, 408 drug sniff detections, directly located or apprehended 27 dangerous suspects, and made 195 different narcotic arrests, and whereas they represented the police department and the city at numerous public safety demonstrations for community events, schools, and community organizations, and whereas the partnership of Sergeant Sells and K-9 Ghost exemplifies dedication, professionalism, and a strong commitment to public safety, and whereas the impact of their service of the department, the city, and the community will be remembered with respect and admiration, and whereas K-9 Ghost has reached the end of his service to the community and has retired from service. Now therefore, in recognition of K-9 Ghost's dedication and service to the protecting of our community, I Andrea Young and the City Council of the City of West Melbourne do hereby proclaim sincere gratitude to K-9 Ghost for his service. I encourage all citizens to celebrate and to thank K-9 Ghost for his dedication and service to our community and wish him the very best in his well-deserved retirement. Witnessed my hand and sealed this 17th day of June 2025. I shake your hand.
Does he want to say a few words?
I'll take it from here.
Do you want to get a photo?
Members of council, attendees, and those watching online, we'd like to send Ghost off with his last drug sniff, so what we're gonna do is have Sergeant Sells and K-9 Ghost conduct a sniff of the area, and if he detects any drugs, he's gonna give an alert, and then Sergeant Sells is gonna pay him, and that's where we're gonna say thank you for your service, and that'll be his last drug sniff. Okay, ready? Then after that, we'll come back up and we'll do a group picture, council will come together, we'll have all the officers join us, and we'll take a group photo.
Huh? Oh, I don't care.
This photo bombing.
I like giving pictures for dogs.
Thank you.
Alright, so the next one, this one has to have a few words of introduction here because he has just done so much for the community, so I'm gonna take a minute here before, actually, I'm only gonna say this name a few times, Pastor Saul Medlin Bayan. I'm not trying not to murder that too bad, please come up. So in 1985, at age 18, Pastor Saul Medlin Bayan began his ministry journey, for 15 years, 1985 through 2000, he served as pastor in multiple United Methodist churches throughout the Philippines, holding several leadership roles in youth ministry and church governance. He was ordained as a deacon in 1992 and as an elder in 1994. In 2000, he came to the United States to start a church for Filipinos and Filipino-Americans in Florida. From 2001 to 2020, he led the Filipino-American ministry at First United Methodist Church of Melbourne. Throughout the years, Pastor Saul Medlin Bayan has accomplished the following: served as a chaplain specializing in end-of-life care since the early 2000s, received his chaplain endorsement in 2005, worked full-time with Vitas Hospice in Melbourne, Florida since 2006, worked for over a decade from 2010 through 2020 with the Space Coast Seafarers Ministry, Wusthof Brevard Hospice, and as a police chaplain for the Melbourne Police Department. Since 2010, he has been a Civil Air Patrol chaplain, holding the rank of captain with the Patrick Squadron of the USAF Auxiliary, received a Bachelor of Arts degree and Doctor of Ministry in 2020 from ATS in Georgia, a Master of Divinity in 1993 from UTS in Manila, and a BA degree in 1990 from Republic Central Colleges. In 2022, he received the Best of the Chaplain, yeah, Best of Chaplain, and the Heart of a Hero Award from the Brevard Heart Foundation, which he's wearing right now and was presented to him by Councilmember Adams. So she had to say his name too. So, that's just his intro, so now we're going to do our certificate of appreciation. And this is a certificate of appreciation for Pastor Saul Medlin Bayan for 40 years of faithful and dedicated service to his congregation and to the community. With gratitude, the City of West Melbourne recognizes your spiritual leadership and your unwavering commitment and devotion to preaching the Word of God, we appreciate your service. Thank you very, very much. Good photo.
Yes, ma'am.
Can the family please come up?
My wife, Mina, for 30 years, and my niece from the Philippines. Yep, she's also a pastor. And the orphan, Saul Medlin Bayan, our nephew, one of our nephews. Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Uh...
I'll hand you a microphone, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
A preacher with a microphone.
Thank you so much, our beloved city mayor, Andrea Young, and of course, our City Council, the Citizen Police Academy, they're here, and we've been here for 25 years, here in Melbourne, and there's no other place but to be here with peaceful and well-disciplined police department and the community. Thank you so much for all your services, thank you mayor.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you very, very much. Alright, and we have one more. And this is for the Florida amateur radio operators, otherwise known as PCARS, I'm gonna get into that in just a moment, don't all of you want to come up here, Phil? You don't have to, but I would think you would want to.
No, you have to.
Okay. Alright, whereas Florida amateur radio operators stand ever-ready to assist individuals and communities during times of emergency and public need, and whereas these highly skilled, dedicated individuals continually study, train, and operate their equipment to ensure they are prepared and provide vital communications support in wherever called, and whereas the Platinum Coast Amateur Radio Society, known as PCARS, will participate in the annual National Field Day event held at Melbourne Fire Academy, 1980 Hughes Road, commencing on Saturday, June 28th, 2025 at 2:00 PM, and continuing through Sunday, June 29th, 2025, and whereas Field Day serves as a national demonstration of emergency preparedness in which amateur radio operators operate under emergency power conditions to test their capabilities in real-world scenarios, and whereas amateur radio operators contribute to numerous community programs, including support for individuals with disabilities, and promote the development of radio as an enriching and educational hobby, and whereas through their environmental, I'm sorry, through their involvement with the American Radio Relay League, ARR-L, the amateur, the Radio Amateur Civil Emergency Services, RACES, and the Amateur Radio Emergency Services, ARES, Florida's amateur radio operators stand diligent and ready to provide critical communication assistance during both local and national emergencies. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida hereby proclaim June 28th, 2025 as Amateur Radio Recognition Day, in the City of West Melbourne in honor and appreciation of the outstanding dedication, service, and technical skill of our amateur radio operators. Witness my hand and seal this, the seal of the city, the 17th day of June 2025. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I will hand this to you. I will shake your hand, Walter, Phil, and yours, thank you very, very much, would you like to say a few words? Vince, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Young, and members of the City Council, guests, we are very honored and humbled to receive this recognition. Amateur radio has existed for over 100 years, and in all that time, it's been a mission, in fact, it's a mandate from the federal government, that amateur radio operators be prepared in the event of an emergency to provide communications, and time after time again, whether it's been a natural emergency or some man-made uprising, amateur radio has been there to provide communications when all other infrastructure went down, hurricanes, which we're very familiar with in this area, any kind of a natural disaster, I think of the eruption of Mount St. Helens in 1980, amateur radio was the only communications in and out of that area for several days. So we're proud to be part of amateur radio, and of course, our Field Day event is held every year in conjunction with the American Radio Relay League, it is a chance to exercise the ability to go out into the field under adverse conditions and be able to maintain communications. And of course, you are all invited to our Field Day this year at the Melbourne Fire Training Center on Hughes Road in Melbourne. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vince, thank you very, very much, gentlemen, have a good day. Thank you, thank you. Oh, photo. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, here we go, have a good day, gentlemen, thank you. And thanks to these gentlemen, I too am a ham radio operator, although I don't operate much in an emergency, call them, they're the pros. Alright, thank you Pastor Med Ben Liam, Med. Thank you, alright, so there are no modifications to the agenda, the next is public hearings, do I have any cards? Nothing, okay. Annexation of 14.35 acres, property located at the east side of Columbia Lane, Ms. Fisher.
Council, what I'd like to do is agenda items 5A, B, and C all pertain to the same property, so if you allow me to do the presentation of all three agenda items, and remember at the end to please do separate motions on each. This is the second reading for some of this, so I'll let the city attorney ask you his question.
Thank you, and as you're probably aware at this point, this is a quasi-jurisdictional hearing, one aspect of quasi-jurisdictional is that you need to disclose for the public and for the applicant any communications that you've made outside of communications with staff or the materials that you've been provided, so if you've had any conversations with anybody, received any emails or anything like that about any of these items, then you should disclose those at this time, thank you.
Alright, continuing, the property and its history, as you see in the aerial, this property is located on the west side of I-95, prior to 2025, what we found out is apparently it did have agriculture there at one time, and as many people can see driving by there, there's some large transmission lines that are in easements that are located on that property. So agenda item 5A has to do with the annexation of the property, as I said, we did the first reading of the ordinance, and that was on May 20th, and agenda items 5B and 5C, now this is the part where we talk about the zoning and the future land use for this. What they're requesting is the City of West Melbourne Commercial Future Land Use Designation, and then for the zoning to complement that, City of West Melbourne Commercial Parkway. The owner is a company called 95 West, the applicant is Floor and Decor, the applicant representatives are here tonight, the property acreage is 14.35 approximately, and Floor and Decor does want to build a retail store there. The annexation analysis is that, you know, the property is located near the city limits, so it meets the city limits adjacency test, it's right next to it, with Dobbs Equipment, and Columbia Lane is a Brevard County road, we have that marked on the map to the right, and Columbia Lane always used to be just a dirt road, a few years ago when Dobbs Equipment came in, it got paved, it's still a county road, it's not a City of West Melbourne road, and it's not paved to the very end of what would be Columbia Lane, but to that red line, which I believe is where there's an easement. The survey does show gas and power line easements, we did talk about this last time, that that area shown in yellow on the map is approximately where it is, they do have their civil engineer here, if you have any questions. And we did send out the notices, not just for the annexation, but the rezoning and the comprehensive plan map amendment, we haven't gotten any phone calls or emails. Moving on to the next agenda item, 5B, this is the request for the future land use designation, from what they have in the county, so on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see that the property still shows with sort of an aerial background, and that has a community commercial designation on the right-hand side of the screen, with it being annexed in, that would then turn to that red color signifying commercial. We do our analysis based partly on compatibility, that's what this table is, and you can see from the future land use column to the right, that quite a bit of it is commercial around it, you do have some industrial, but that's on the east side of the highway, and the commercial designation for this size of acreage is compatible with the adjacent industrial uses to the north and to the west, and it is, like I said, consistent with the county's designation of what they call community commercial. From the comprehensive plan, we're required to look at not just surrounding properties, second bullet tells you about our goals, objectives, and policies, then third bullet tells you the maximum sort of impacts, and that's what we have in those tick marks underneath, the water and sewer, they would connect to City of West Melbourne. And that's what we have in those tick marks underneath the water and sewer. They would connect to City of West Melbourne. Drainage is always on-site for new development, and solid waste would be waste management. We've gone through this before. This is something that we have to send to the state, our staff report. So we have to make sure the analysis is in there that shows a difference between the two designations. So I'm not going to read through this, but the upside of it is that there's actually a decrease in impacts by coming into the city and developing as commercial under our floor area ratio instead of the counties. It is consistent with the future land use goals, objectives, and policies in terms of, you know, having that property be designation of commercial. That it's exactly meant for, you know, having a healthy economic and business environment. As I've said before, the State of Florida requires that you all and staff look at property rights when we're making decisions. So I always bring up this slide. This is also in the staff report. Moving on to Agenda Item 5C, the rezoning. Again, you can see that in the county, so the slide on the left-hand side of the screen, has a oval. And in there, the letters are BU-1. So that's their zoning in the county. That stands for business use or general retail commercial. And in the city, it would become Commercial Parkway. That's sort of the closest thing that we could find to that. That would be consistent with what we have for our intent statements in the zoning code. The rezoning analysis is very similar. Again, you'll see some of those zoning letters change from what it was in the future land use column on the far right. It's still compatible with many of those designations. So sort of summarizing, May 20th is when you had the first approval of ordinance 2025-11. Then subsequent to that, the reason we didn't come back to council June 3rd is because in between, we go to the Planning and Zoning Board as the advisory board to the city about land matters. They did give their recommendation for approval, and that was for both the comprehensive plan map amendment and the rezoning. What the Planning and Zoning Board advised was that council approve these Agenda Items 5A, 5B, and 5C. And I don't know, Mayor, if you want the city attorney to read the paragraph on all of those.
I could read them all in succession and then have you vote for them individually, or I can read them one at a time, and then you vote and read the next one, then vote. Either way, you prefer.
You can do it all at once, and that way it's done.
All right, well, settle in then. This is ordinance number 2025-11. An ordinance to the City of West Melbourne, Bivard County, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition a parcel of land approximately 14.35 plus or minus acres in size, located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of Highway 192, and as more fully described herein. Finding that the area being annexed is reasonably compact and contiguous to the city, that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave, and that the annexation of the property otherwise complies with Florida law. Amending the corporate boundaries of the city to provide for incorporation of real property described herein, providing for filing of the revised city boundaries with the Department of State, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Next is ordinance number 2025-14. An ordinance to the City of West Melbourne, Bivard County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to change the future land use on a parcel of land approximately 14.35 plus or minus acres, located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of Highway 192, and as more fully described herein, from Bivard County Community Commercial CC to City of West Melbourne Commercial, providing an effective date. And finally, ordinance number 2025-15. An ordinance to the City of West Melbourne, Bivard County, Florida, rezoning a 14.35 plus or minus acre parcel of land generally located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of Highway 192, and as more fully described herein, from Bivard County BU-1 General Retail Commercial to City of West Melbourne CP Commercial Parkway, providing effective date. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley, did you have a question?
No, I have a motion.
Okay, I gotta open the public hearing, right. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Do I have anyone wishing to speak? No, we'll close the public hearing.
The applicant is here.
Does the applicant wish to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and the City Council, staff and members of the audience. Sorry, back here. Glad to be here, glad to be back. Obviously, we're doing something right here. So I just, first of all, wanted to say thank you to staff members, Kristy Fisher and Denise Curry, leading us and to this point. It was very helpful, and we really appreciate the support. Now, I did want to highlight a couple things about our store, our business, that we are looking to bring to town, in case if you are not familiar with our concept. We are a retail store, somewhat specialty store. So we bring tile and decorative products. We also have some design ideas in the store, what we call Design Center. We have some specialists on the floor that can help with the design of whatever project you're contemplating. And will help not only with the design, but also calculating all the materials and supplies that are needed. So pretty much, it's a one-stop shop for a specific decorative project. So you get everything there. We sort of boost local economy, I should say, by facilitating contractors, local contractors that come in and oftentimes work with us and buy a lot of product for the homeowners that typically have design ideas. So they are there to implement them. We have a very convenient section for what we call customer pickup. This is a section by the store where you can preorder all the materials. They'll be all sorted, all packed, and we'll wait for your contractor or homeowner come in and pick up. So we allow for some stores go to up to 90 days that we can store that for convenience. So they pull in, we load it, and they're gone. So usually, those are timed, and so there's never a crowd or, you know, issues with the pickup. As far as operation, we typically, typical hours, 8 to 8, we all year round with some major holidays, of course. We employ about 40 to 50 full-time and part-time with benefits people per store. We train them. We care for them. We also happy to become part of the community by partnering with local initiatives. Some communities have unique ideas. We're always open to that. But generally, we sponsor school teams, sports teams, and local charity events, and participate in fundraising activities. Let's see what, as far as our timing, what we would like to do, and that's our goal, is to, once we move along through the approval process with the city and get some troubleshooting with the utility easements there, we plan to start construction in March, mid-March 2026, with the goal to open the store in November of 2026. So with that, I'll come here for any questions if...
Thank you. Mr. Bentley, I know you're holding with a motion. Would you want to make your motion now?
Sure. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Frampton?
It sounds like you have multiple stores. Is what, where are you at in that process? How many you have?
Yes, so we, our corporate office is in Atlanta, Georgia. So we build nationwide certain markets that we define as promising markets, and...
So these aren't independently owned? It's all corporately owned?
They're all corporate-owned. They're all corporate-owned, and we build them all and design them all in-house. So typically, we open 25 to 30 stores per year nationwide.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you. I'd make a motion. We approve the second reading of ordinance number 2025-11, annexing property located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of US 192.
Thank you, Ms. Volz.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And Ms. Adams, you have a, no question? Okay, all right. We have a motion to approve from Mr. Bentley. We have a second from Ms. Volz. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Looking forward to seeing your store. All right, thank you. Ms. Volz, did you want to say something? Your light is on. Did you want to say something?
She's going to make a next motion.
Oh, you're going to make the next motion. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. All right, so we move ahead with the next motion. Go ahead. No, he does not have his light on.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, since I put my glasses on, for this small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. And in the first reading, I think that's all I need to say on that, isn't it? Yeah, because there's a bunch of numbers in there, but, okay.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Volz, and we have a, Mr. Frampton?
I'll second the 2025-14 motion.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. All right, next, Item C. 2025-15, Mr. Frampton.
Make a motion. We approve the first reading of ordinance number 2025-15 as written.
Thank you. And Mr. Gaylord?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton, and a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries 7-0. All right, thank you very much. Next item. Annexation of property located at 3010 Dairy.
Yes, so similar to what we just did, I'm going to present Agenda Items 5D, E, and F together. And it's the same request that you make individual motions on each of those ordinances. And I'll let the city attorney ask his question.
Thank you. This is another quasi-jurisdictional disclosure. So if you've had any communications outside of with staff or what's in the packet, please disclose them at this time.
All right, thank you.
We also disclose when we go past the property as well, correct?
If you're going past it to specifically look at it and obtain information. If you just happen to be driving by and don't pay any more attention to it than anything else, you don't need to let us know you were driving down Dairy yesterday. So it depends on your intention.
Sort of like wing gate.
I understood. I did drive past the property with the goal of looking at it in regards to this meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So the background of the property is that the City of West Melbourne is the property owner in this case, and that we are annexing it into the city. So even though we own the property, it was not in our city limits. So Agenda Item 5D deals with that annexation. Agenda Item 5E is a comprehensive plan map amendment, and 5F is a rezoning. The properties that we're talking about, if you look at the aerial, there's two small rectangles. And that means those are the two properties that are next to each other. They're not united as one property. We are going to make that into one property here shortly. The potential use, and this is really something you could talk to the city manager about, is possible future utility improvements. It is next to a city canal. So it makes sense that, you know, in the short term, if there was anything that the city had to do to the city canal, just like I told the Planning and Zoning Board, there is room to not just be in the right-of-way for the canal, but to be on the property that we own. The existing future land use in the county is residential 4, and it's because there was a house there years ago. What the proposed future land use would be would be institutional. So the annexation analysis is, again, first point is about the adjacency test. Is it next to our city limits? The answer is yes. We talk about the city canal to the north. And as far as I'm aware, there's no immediate plans for the property. And we talked about the two properties are going to be united as one, and that in the staff report, we talk about that it slightly reduces an unincorporated pocket. Again, just like any of the other annexations, we send out the notices. We did not get any phone calls or emails or visits from adjacent property owners. And this is what you would see from the streets. All of council could see that. If you were standing on the other side of Dairy Road, you would see sort of this wooded area. So there's not much to look at. It's just a wooded area. And you can kind of see the marker for where that property starts with the telephone pole. Moving on to Agenda Item 5E, the future land use designation. If you look at the left-hand side of the screen, and we have the arrow from subject properties to those two ovals that say Res 4, that's what the designation is in the county. On the right-hand side of the screen, we've colored in those properties with a gray, and that signifies institutional. The same thing, we do a compatibility analysis of what's on the north, south, east, and west of the property. And by and large, you have residential, which we know. You do have the Dairy Road right-of-way. And it makes sense to designate these city-owned properties with institutional because they may be used for municipal purposes. So right now, the property is vacant, but in case, then we already have the property zone as institutional, and it's very clear who owns the property. Our comprehensive plan review, again, involves us looking at the future land use goals, objectives, and policies. And one of those policies has to do with the institutional land use. So we have our comments on that. And the same thing with the land use map amendments. We have to kind of look at what guidance we get from the comprehensive plan, and this request would be consistent with those. With the public services, you know, even if the city was to have some sort of building there, which I don't believe it would ever do, we do have the water and sewer capacity there. And in terms of fire and police, as you all know, with annexations, we would continue to have the service from the county. It would be our law enforcement instead of the county sheriff's office.
I have a question. This is not something where you would have to send out notices to anybody, any surrounding property?
We did.
You did.
We did. We absolutely did.
You did not hear anything?
We did not. That's why I made a point of saying to you all, we did everything we do for every other project that comes here, and we heard nothing, which surprised me too.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And then Agenda Item 5F, that's the P1 institutional zoning is what we would designate it. And all sites with the institutional zoning are related to large established organizations. So this is not going to be for something that is a commercial, like we just heard about Florin Decor. It would never be for something like that. It's always, you know, large established organization. And it's also important to note that we don't just sort of paint a map with that gray color. It's on a case-by-case basis. So institutional only happens through city councils saying, yes, that this is where we're going to have a church, or we're going to have a school, or we're going to have a whatever, that is, you know, something that serves the public. The map is very similar to the future land use, where you go from residential. So the SR is in the county, suburban residential. RR stands for rural residential. This area was rural once upon a time. It's ceased being rural for many years now. And then it would have that color gray signifying the P1 zoning. We do a similar analysis for the rezoning. And then summarizing, May 20th is when you all approved the first reading of ordinance 2025-12. And then, as I said to you with the previous cases, we went to the Planning and Zoning Board as a local planning advisory group, and they did make recommendations on both the comprehensive plan map amendment and the rezoning. So in conclusion, they have recommended that you all approve the annexation, the small-scale map amendment, and the rezoning. And the last line helps to answer the question that May 22nd is when we sent out those notices. Yeah. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
I was going to have the city attorney read the ordinance titles.
We can do that now instead. All right. Please read the ordinance.
Okay. This is ordinance number 2025-12, and I'm going to read all three in succession unless I hear otherwise. An ordinance to the City of West Melbourne, Bivard County, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition parcels of land approximately 1.51 plus or minus acres in size, located at 3010 Dairy Road, and as more fully described herein. Finding that the area being annexed is reasonably compact and contiguous to the city, that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave, and that the annexation of the property otherwise complies with Florida law. Amending the corporate bodies of the city to provide for the incorporation of the real property described herein, providing for file... providing for filing of the revised city boundaries with the Department of State, providing for repeal in prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for suburbability, and providing effective date. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2025-16. In ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to change future land use on the parcels of land, totaling 1.51 plus or minus acres located at 3010 Dairy Road, as more fully described herein, from Brevard County Residential Four to City of West Melbourne Institutional, providing an effective date. And finally, ordinance number 2025-17. In ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning a 43.7 acre parcel of land generally, this is not the right one, sorry. The, all right, so the next one is 2025-17. Sorry, my, this was printed out wrong for, let me see, just give me a second here. Yep, I got to look through the packet and find it real quick. If anybody has a page for me to point me to.
That should have been 5F9, but I don't know if it has the right title.
Mm-hmm. Just give me a second, I'm almost there.
So if that's an error on our part.
Sixteen, I'm not looking at assigning blame, I just want to read it correctly so that we can move on. All right, so ordinance number 2025-17. In ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, yeah, the, I think the, I think the wrong title was copied into here. So we'll need to... Do you know if we have the right one written down, Kristi, or?
We probably do, but I would have to get into the server. So if you want to postpone reading the title, and I'll get with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's something we can do before they vote, or if we're going to need to postpone this until later in the meeting. But, yeah, I've got to read it properly in order to move on, so.
Mayor, may I suggest we have a very skilled IT individual in the room, who, if we could skip to the next item, and then if we could circle back to this item, there was an error, error in the agenda, the wrong language is in there, and so if we could...
Do we want to just do 12 and 16, and then just come back for 17? Or just skip the entire?
Well, I had questions on some of them.
Oh, long questions, like maybe five minutes of questions?
Yeah, probably.
I mean, I don't think I have five minutes of questions.
But we have three people with questions, so Ms. Adams.
All right, we can do that. Was I first, Mayor?
Yes, you are first.
Thank you. My question is in regards to the proposed use. I know nothing is set in stone in regards to the city, but being that it's proposed to be institutional, looking at potential future utility improvements, or then staging area only, that's a very heavily wooded area. Are we then looking to clear that for a potential staging area? Or would it need to be cleared for utilities? And the reason that I'm asking is because we've had relatively frequent conversations about the amount of growth in the city, and we have very few parcels of undeveloped land left. So if possible, and I know we don't own a lot left in terms of bringing it in, and we've owned this for a while, we're just bringing it in to be officially part of the city. I'd have interest in leaving it as undeveloped land if possible.
Yeah, that's a great question. Right now, we have no future plans for the site. We acquired it several years ago, and then tore down the house that was vacant and dilapidated. Oh, in rough shape. Oh geez, that didn't come out right. It was in very rough shape. With the idea that possibly fell road would be going through. And so this parcel would have acted as supplemental stormwater for that road. That project is now not in existence, and has been removed from the comp plan. And so this is, the reason we're bringing this forward is it is a piece of land that we own, and it's in the county, and so we waited until there was another annexation, and floor and decor came along, and so we piggybacked the meetings to do this at the same time. There is a thought in future years of possibly, this could be a site for a deep well injection. But we are working with a company to identify that would be in many future years. That's not a, you know, short-term project, that's a long-term project, because it's proximity to the water and sewer plant. And so, right now, I would say the next three to five years, other than mowing it, we don't have any plans to do anything on the site. But certainly, if we needed to do any kind of additional utility or stormwater work with the canal, this could serve as a staging spot for that work as well.
And what would the clearing of that look like? There's no way to preserve?
No, no plans to clear. If we were to clear, we would have to follow the clear, the development, the tree ordinance, and account for all the trees, and then replace, either replace or put into the tree bank any trees that we took down. But right now, next three to five years, this is not on my radar for doing anything at the site other than mowing it and keeping it looking okay.
I understand that. I'm just trying to think beyond those three to five years, and potentially trying to keep it as undeveloped. Thank you. I know, we're going to be out of land, and that's what I keep hearing, and yet we have this. I know it's small, and it's thin, but it's near a canal, it's close to subdivisions, it's right next to county property, we can't control what the county does in their property, but we can control this land, so, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you, all my lights have gone off, no more questions. Oh, you're adding, I have a light on, Mr. Gaylord.
This is a question to Mr. Carey. Just educational from my perspective. The ordinance reading that you did for the first one, I think it was 12, why does it, what is the, what does this annexation not lead to the creation of an enclave? Is it because the other side isn't surrounded?
Yeah, the definition of enclave is set by statute, and essentially, this means it needs to be continued, or that the, that the property has to be contiguous with city property, which as you can see, it is. And that the, it doesn't create an enclave by enclosing county property, which it does not. Because as you can see, there's still an area off to the east that isn't affected by this annexation, that will allow the other properties to not be an enclave.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. How are we doing with 17 with the ordinance?
Did you want to discuss, go ahead.
I'll let you all know that the planning department made an error. We have to re-advertise. We use some of the description from Project Zeppelin in that title paragraph. So we have to re-advertise a new title. And I don't know if you all just want to postpone all three of these until we re-advertise just that one ordinance.
Can we just do 12 and 16, since we've already done all of this, and come back to 17? All right, Ms. Adams.
Well, do we, do we need an official motion to table? Is it a tabling if we have to re-advertise, what is that legally?
Yeah, I mean, the purpose of tabling something is to put the public on notice when the next hearing will be. Since we have to advertise it, that will be putting it on notice, so there's really no reason to do that. But if you want to do it that way, that's fine, there's no harm in doing that either. We just need to make it clear that we're going to be re-advertising this.
So then we do, or we do not need a motion to table? We're done?
You don't need one, yeah. Because it'll be re-advertised, and the process is going to start over.
All right, so then we're looking for a motion for 2516. Ms. McGuire.
All right, you mean 12?
Yes, that one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance number 25, or 2025-12 is written.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. McGuire, we have a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you. All right, the next one is going to be 16. Mr. Bentley.
The next one is 16?
2025-16.
Okay. All right, so I'll make, I thought it was the other one. Small-scale map amendment, approve, I make a motion, we approve first reading of ordinance number 2025-16, adopting the city-initiated small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment.
Mr. Frampton.
Second.
Thank you, we have, and, all right, my lights are out. Motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley, second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, and then 17, we'll get on the next meeting, okay? And we'll go down to G, solicitation ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-13. This is an attempt to clean up the solicitation ordinance, as we discussed during first reading. Our solicitation ordinance is kind of obsolete. It was created back when the local governments could do a little bit more than they can do now as far as regulating solicitation. Historically, you know, back in the early 1900s, there was a case that went up to the Supreme Court from the city, or the town of Green River, Wyoming, that the Supreme Court basically green-lighted solicitation ordinances. And so they popped up all over the country. Gradually, over the years, courts have been kind of chipping away at them, finding that certain aspects of solicitation are covered by the First Amendment. And so this attempt is to revise the code to both streamline it and hopefully ensure that it's constitutional if it ever gets challenged. The primary goals of the ordinance are to ensure that the only time that we require a permit and otherwise have regulations on the nature of speech is if it's for commercial speech, which is an avenue that local governments are still allowed to generally regulate. However, we've taken out things like charitable solicitors that are asking for donations to charitable causes, because I don't think that's legally defensible anymore based on court case law based out of other circuits, as well as the US Supreme Court. And I've also tried to remove discretion from when an ordinance gets approved. The more discretion that the local officer has, the more likely that a court is going to find that it's not allowed. We want clear standards so that whoever the official is issuing the permit just has to look, are these requirements met? If yes, we issue it, if no, we don't. I've also made several amendments to the ordinance after first reading, based on the discussion of this council. And a couple of them were to just make sure that we're clarifying that we're only dealing with commercial speech. We changed the word license to permit, to make it consistent with the statute. And I also amended the can, or the curfew, as we discussed in the meeting, to eight o'clock or sundown, whichever is earlier, which I think will make it easier to defend. We can certainly point to the public purpose served by not allowing people to canvas or in the dark because of the public safety aspect of it, while opening them up during the summer, when the days are longer, to be able to canvas a little bit later. And, you know, we chose eight o'clock because the Eighth Circuit out in Colorado struck down a seven o'clock curfew as being too restrictive. So that is the ordinance, and I would like to be able to...
You mean solicit, not canvas.
Solicit, yes, correct.
You want to read the ordinance?
Yes, this is ordinance number 2025-13. In ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Florida, relating to solicitation, revising Section 46-1 of the City Code of the City of West Melbourne, relating to purpose and intent of Chapter 46 of the City Code, amending Section 46-2, providing definitions, amending Section 46-3, relating to restrictions and requirements generally, amending Section 36-5, requiring permission to enter premises, amending Section 46-6, prohibiting harassment, amending Section 46-7, requiring the solicitor to leave when requested, amending Section 46-8, relating to fraud, cheating, and misrepresentation, amending Section 46-9, relating to report of conviction and records, amending Section 46-10, relating to solicitation, sales, or peddling within the streets or right-of-way, amending Section 46-11, relating to exemption for canvassers performing political canvassing activities within the streets or right-of-way, amending Section 46-21, requiring a permit, amending Section 46-22, relating to application for a permit, amending Section 46-23, relating to filing fee, amending Section 46-24, relating to investigation, denial, or issuance of permit and record, amending Section 46-25, providing cause for revocation of the permit, amending Section 46-26, requiring a notice of hearing, amending Section 46-27, providing for appeals, repealing Section 46-28, no longer require a badge for solicitation, repealing Section 46-29, deleting a redundant section, providing for conflicts, providing for suburbability, providing for codification and scrivenor errors, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
That was a lot. All right, this is a public hearing, do we have any cards? No, we have no cards, we'll close the public hearing, Ms. Volz.
I have a question about Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. Are they just okay to come and do whatever?
Yeah, so the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are considered charitable solicitors, and so they generally wouldn't be covered by the ordinance, except to the extent that you can ask them to leave your property, and they have to comply.
That's it, okay. Thank you.
Did you want to make the motion on that?
Yes, if there's no other lights on, I will make...
There is, but your light was on first.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2025-13.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton. All right, there's a motion on the floor from Ms. Volz, and a second from Mr. Frampton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you. All right, public forum, no cards for public forum either, all right. Consent agenda. Ms. Volz, your light is still on, did you want to make the motion for the?
No.
All right, Mr. Frampton, did you want to make the?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, the two items, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton, and a second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Action agenda, non-consent, final plat for Heritage Point Commercial.
Okay, thank you, council, if you, I thought we had it. Okay, we don't have it, so. The final plat is, again, the request to finalize a subdivision that's been before council as a preliminary plat. So unfortunately, I do not have the presentation here to show you, but I wanted to let you all know that this is the property that's located at the corner of Heritage Oaks Boulevard and Minton Road. So if you picture that corner, there's property that looks like it's cleared, you can see the sand, and that's the property. The applicant is here, so it's the civil engineers representative that is here, and they can tell you a little bit more about it. But this property did go through the preliminary plat, and then the final plat years ago. What they did not do at that time is this commercial component of it. So they just had one big lot along Minton Road that they had identified for commercial use. And at this point in time, they have three lots that they would like to split that one lot into. And then they would have a road that would be next to their internal pond, and it would connect to Minton Road, and also connect to Heritage Oaks Boulevard. So the request is for that private road, those three commercial lots. The stormwater ponds already exist, and they have posted their performance bonds. This plat review has been in the making for two years now, because they submitted construction drawings, and we went back and forth, and the project sort of stalled. But they finally are ready to move forward with the Mylar and get the plat recorded. So I suppose then their next step is going to be to sell the lots. I'll try to answer any questions you have. I apologize that we didn't have the presentation. But the items that are in your staff report do accurately reflect, you know, where the property is and what's being requested.
Could, could the city clerk maybe go to page 129 of the packet, or page 8A-6 of the packet, so we could get the aerial, get the aerial on the screen?
Kristi, did you say the county approved the road already, that the curb cut?
Seven. I don't believe that you guys have the right-of-way permit yet from the county for the connection to Minton. We have the applicant come up here so they can answer us. So to connect that new proposed internal road to Minton Road, you're right, they would have to get Brevard County's right-of-way approval. And I'm not sure if they have that yet.
My name is Brian Bussin.
Can you speak into the microphone?
My name is Brian Bussin.
Thank you.
6405 Genoa Trail.
6405 Genoa Trail, Melbourne. I represent the...I'm the project manager. I am not with the engineer. The engineer had a medical problem, so I picked the longest straw. I'd be glad to answer any questions or explain.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Well, I still have...I agree with Mr. Frampton. I had questions about the road connection, so if you'd like to start with that one.
We have a county permit. It took 15 months to get the county permit for the driveway that enters onto Minton And there's a turn lane. The county wanted a left turn lane going south on Minton. That's all part of the county right-of-way permit.
Where are they requesting that there's going to be the left turn lane? Only because I'm looking at the aerial that's in our packet.
Well, I can show you...
Can you take the microphone so if you speak, we can hear you?
Everybody can't see the screen over there, so, I mean...
Well, that's true. They can't see it.
Yes. That's why I'm asking.
The county permit on Minton Road started with a driveway permit right here across from this new subdivision.
So that would be right in alignment with the Palm Gardens subdivision? They're not going to have what we call an offset of driveways from that R Taylor. There's already a median cut. If you can picture that area, there's already a median cut, and it makes sense that the county would say, if they're going to have any driveway onto Minton, that it would have to be aligned with what's on the west side.
Right, but the county is going to have them turn left onto Minton at that cutout?
Is the county going to allow...
I thought that's what he said, so I just wanted to make sure I understand.
I think the access is right out only.
Okay.
Okay, so it's right. Okay, that makes more sense.
It didn't write out?
But he did say left.
That's why it didn't make sense to me, so I wanted to make sure in terms of safety that crossing Minton would have been a bad idea. What does the road that you're looking to construct next to your pond with that connection to Heritage Oaks Boulevard, how is that cutout currently going to be structured? Because you have on that right-hand side cars coming into that neighborhood. So then we're looking for a right turn and a left turn out?
Correct.
With how close that cutout will then be to the intersection of Minton and Heritage Oaks Boulevard, where I know that currently cars stack?
Three hundred and eighty feet.
And we have...
Three hundred and eighty feet.
I'm very familiar with the area. We also have many students that cross that intersection. We have crossing guards there who currently help with that, and we still have issues trying to make sure people see the crossing guards and do not hit the students crossing. My concern is with how close that is to the intersection and with the stacking of the cars currently. Christie, do we have any current plans to work with the county in terms of either dedicated turn lanes or trying to address the potential stacking that's going to happen there for cars coming in and out?
Well, Heritage Oaks Boulevard is a city road.
Right.
So we do have control over that, and it has gone through construction drawing approval. But certainly, Mr. Rodi, if there's something you want staff to look at at that particular driveway, if the county's already issued its permit for Minton Road, we can reach out to them and...
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind, very good point, that people exiting this commercial development on Minton will have a right turn ability. However, people exiting this commercial development who want to go south, that's why the Heritage Oaks left turn. Otherwise, they would be in a position where they have to go in further into Heritage Oaks, and you wouldn't...you tend not to intermingle commercial traffic with residential traffic.
Right, but currently leaving Heritage Oaks, if you want to go south, there is no dedicated turn lane, and we have people coming from Milwaukee and people coming from Heritage Oaks Boulevard, and I witness on an almost daily basis cars from either intersection turning and trying to cross and then almost hit or do hit each other. So I'm trying to figure out how do we introduce new traffic to that intersection while being safe.
So we can certainly have...take a look from a traffic engineering standpoint because it's also not a lot of room to add another lane. Otherwise, we're looking at landscaping changes and sign changes. So let us take a look at that. I think that's a very valid point. We'd also need to see, you know, unfortunately, they don't have end users, so we don't know traffic counts. Obviously, a high-traffic user is going to change that equation versus, you know, an accounting office or something that would...
There just seems to be more unknown than I'm currently comfortable with. Thank you.
Mr. Frampton?
I'm not thrilled about the position of the right-in, right-out lane because undoubtedly cars are going to come out of there and try to get across the road and make a left there.
You're talking about Minton Road?
Yeah. I mean, that position of that road there at the cutout where you can just cross over the road, it's just...I'm not in favor of this project just because of that road, other than the position, so...
Ms. McGuire?
So just to clarify, you said that the county...because what I'm looking at on here has a southbound and a northbound for the Minton exit, and you said that the county isn't allowing the southbound one? Or am I misspeaking?
No, I don't think the southbound turn was allowed.
Okay, just checking. Okay.
Ms. Volz?
Yeah.
Yes, I was wondering if the project could...if we could just not allow that Heritage Oaks part of it. So the project, whoever comes in will have to go right out. Because you're right, that the traffic on right there, that intersection, Milwaukee, and the kids walking, it's just a mess over there, so...
So the plans that were submitted, that's a good point, Councilwoman Volz. The plans that were submitted are on the screen here, which were part of the packet. It does show a left turn ability on Minton. And so I think a fair question to the applicant is, has something changed with the county between now, you know, between tonight's meeting and the submission of this? Or it's very hard to ask a council to approve something that's showing something that you are contradictory to?
I need to go back and look at the county permit because I thought...I need to go back and look at the county permit because I thought it was right out only.
Okay.
So we can certainly, you know, hold off on this. Again, this is for the final plat of three lots in that tract. And you're right, the road tract that you see in gray, here's a gray ribbon, that would connect Minton and would connect Heritage Oaks Boulevard. We did go through a final plat that didn't show this, so next agenda item, we can certainly show you what was approved. I think it was two years ago, two or three years ago, and you can compare that layout to this one. That's it.
Christie, do you currently know if there's an option to not connect to Heritage Oaks Boulevard if this is indeed a turn left and turn right onto Minton?
It certainly plays a part in it. If they have just an exclusive right out, then that limits some of this unless the county's intention was that, yeah, everybody's going to have to do a U-turn, but it makes it trickier to maneuver three lots from that site with just one access out.
Understood, but where they're currently located...
Yeah.
I won't repeat my previous comments. Thank you.
I understand. They do have, you know, what they tried to do by having this little portion of property was to purposely move it further away from that intersection. And I know that Heritage Oaks Boulevard, you know, right now it has sort of that residential feel with that middle island, and that's what I believe the city manager was talking about, that the only way, you know, to make it different than today would be to expand out and add some turn lanes. That's not something that we had talked to the applicant about during their review. It was based on traffic counts and some of the information they gave us, but certainly we can revisit this and come back to you all.
Are we going to table this? Do we have a date certain?
I think you should for the record, but I would say you need to give us probably three months because if we have to coordinate with the county, it's going to take a little bit of time.
All right. Do you want to give us a date, three months out, so that we can get a motion to table?
But yes, if we can have that.
One, two, three.
Unless the applicant wants to say something else.
I just want to ask, it was before my time, but wasn't this all based on a traffic study?
There is a traffic study, yes.
Just to clarify, since this isn't a public hearing or quasi judicial, we don't need to have a date certain. They can just bring it back when they've finished coordinating with staff, and we can just bring it back without setting a date right now.
But we do need a motion to do that.
You need, yeah, you need a motion to table the item since it's on the agenda.
Okay, Ms. Adams?
But staff currently believes it'll take about three months?
Probably.
Okay, thank you. With that in mind, I will make a motion to table the final plat for Heritage Point Commercial.
Mr. Bentley?
Second.
We have a motion to table from Ms. Adams and a second from Mr. Bentley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, we'll see you in three months, approximately. All right, next item. Annual Manhole Rehabilitation Project Sanitary Sewer. Mr. Piccarillo?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is the first time this has come into council this way. We've been doing this annual maintenance on manholes for about 14 years. The company we were using was able to come in and do a few of them at a time for us throughout the whole year, and we would get a certain number done with what we had budgeted. Unfortunately, their crew has been getting smaller, and they are busy, so they were unable to do it this year for us. So we had to reach out to other companies to see who could assist us in continuing this annual maintenance on our manholes. So Incitraform has a unit that does this for us, so we reached out to them. They came out, looked at our manholes. We're looking to try to get 35 manholes rehabbed this year in our older neighborhoods. Clementswood Park is one of the bigger ones, and they average each manhole's about $5,000 is an average. Some will be less, some will be more. Depends when they go in and find the old brick manholes roots in there. So it's each manhole has its own identity. So we do this every year, so what we can't get done this year, we just roll over to next year just as our lining project with that. So you can see the streets are all the manholes that we are looking to do. Again, we have a total of 35 manholes. Hopefully, we can get all of them done, but it may vary depending on what cost each one does for us. We did budget $173,000 for this year's manhole rehab, and hopefully, we'll get close to that and to go from there if we can get all 35 done. If not, again, we just roll over, ones we don't do, same as lining, and just add that to the next year's annual project. So it's my request that we authorize the city manager to award the contract to Incitraform Technologies through the Piggyback Contract Number 23-065 PW with Deep Page County, Illinois, in the amount of $173,513.72. Incitraform Technologies, along with us, are members of the Omni Partners, which stands for the largest, most experienced group of purchasing organization in the United States.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Piccarillo. Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We authorize city manager to award the contract to Incitraform Technologies for not to exceed $173,513.72, as written.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gaylord?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton and a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Piccarillo. All right, item...
Last one for the...
All right, 8C, Agreement with Coastal Florida Police Benevolence Association.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, it's been a labor of love that I'm able to bring forward another two-year agreement with our police union. A couple of key items to this agreement, again, two-year agreement of the financial end changes. The shoe allowance did go up from $100 to $150. The wages are a 7% increase for the first year and a 7% increase for the second year. And then there was a striking of language for the specialized positions to eliminate the school resource officers, as we do not have them anymore. And then we added the K-9 officer as a specialty position for a $2,000 annual bump to our K-9, our two K-9 officers. Those are the significant items. There was a, as is every year, there's a couple language cleanups and clarifications, and then some additional clarification with some numbering that went into the agreement. It's been a pretty good process, probably three months now, and so it's my pleasure to bring this action forward. The other key relevant piece of information is this did go to a vote of the union, and it did pass by unanimous or by a majority vote to approve this agreement. So the action this evening, if the council were to approve this, that would put the contract into existence to start July 1, and I ask that the council give that consideration.
All right, thank you. Mr....Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rodi, thank you for your work on this agreement. I know we've discussed it during our shade sessions at length, so with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-10, approving a collective bargaining agreement with the Coastal Florida Police Benevolent Association for the term ending June 30, 2027.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams. We have a second from Mr. Bentley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item. D, Creation of a Youth Advisory Board.
It is my great honor to turn this agenda item over to Councilwoman Adams, who has put in the labor, the labor and the love of helping to create this committee. Councilwoman Adams?
Thank you, sir. When I had chatted with Mr. Rodi about this item being on the agenda, I thought, man, do I make a formal presentation? Can we just have a conversation? And I figured, well, we've had our conversations about it with council workshops, but what you will see in your packet is the proposed application process for our youth advisory board, following much of the feedback from either council members, staff, Mr. Rodi, part of this process. Just for the public's knowledge, since most of them didn't attend our workshop where we had this discussion, the purpose, there are multiple purposes for bringing forth the idea of a youth advisory board, the main ones being that it would provide the youth of our city an opportunity to share their perspective and have a direct impact on West Melbourne now, but also, you know, the West Melbourne of the future, as well as providing them the educational experience in civics, their leadership, and also just municipal operations, which I know many of us attended. The League of Cities meeting that was held recently hosted by West Melbourne and another city. hosted by West Melbourne and another city. And the reason I bring that up is because many of our scholarship recipients for that presentation are choosing to get involved in local government and want careers that impact their city. And so this sort of opportunity would be perfect for those students as we look to foster just their interest in local government, their interest in serving their city. You will see in the packet, I will just make a note that I think there are still probably some smaller details that need to be hashed out if we're going to treat this advisory board like all of our other advisory boards in terms of assigning a council liaison. Most of our boards are then assigned in November, but keeping in mind the timeline of the school calendar year, which is the best, historically, the best time to engage with students as they start school in August. Most clubs will then start in September, and we are looking at hosting this throughout a calendar year, just knowing that families go on holiday for the summer and want to be respectful of that. So we do want to continue, we do want to continue the process and make sure that if we're looking at potentially kickstarting this and getting students involved at the beginning of the upcoming school year, you know, I figure that discussion would either be held on the dais to handle any smaller detail changes, but that ultimately, I do ask for your support in creating the youth advisory board, which I think is going to do great things for West Melbourne.
All right.
With that, I open it up. If there are questions, feedback, or anything else.
Mr. Frambus?
I do have a question, and I might be nitpicking or something, but where it says between 14 and 17 years old, wouldn't that make it 15 and 16 if it was between the two ages? I'm just...
How would you like me to reword that?
I'm just asking because...
I tried to be as inclusive as possible?
The way I read it, it means just 15 and 16.
No, but wouldn't we say 14 through, yeah, 14 through 17?
That is your only edit to my draft. I am okay with that.
I think you did a great job, but that stood out to me when I read it. I'm just...
That is generally synonymous with your...
Okay.
There's a clause for Scribner's errors.
Is that all, Mr. Frambus?
That is.
All right, Ms. Volz.
Yes, I, no, I just think this is an awesome opportunity for our community, the kids in our community, and, and I guess, grown up, excuse me, just never had a chance to do anything like this. Maybe I would have gotten out of politics. I don't know. I don't know. But I'm very glad that you are involved, and I would love for you to be the liaison from this board to that board and find the students who are interested. And I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for the kids in our community to move forward and to give them, just to give them an idea of how things work. And I think it's important. There's so many kids that just don't have a clue how things work, you know? So if you want me to make a motion...
How about we give the honor to Ms. Adams? How about that?
Yeah. Okay, I am going to make a motion.
Respectfully, ma'am, I'd like to make the motion.
You want to make?
I do.
Go for it. Go for it.
I was trying to let everybody give their feedback first, but thank you. With that in mind, I'd like to make the motion to adopt Resolution 2025-11 to establish the youth advisory board. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frambus.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams. We have a second from Mr. Frambus. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. But I do have a question that I forgot to ask. I have three people right now, three young people who would just be terrific. Where do I tell them? How do they, how do they fill out, where is the application? How do they get...
Well, currently, the application is in our packet since we didn't approve it till now.
I didn't read that, okay.
So my understanding, since this application is slightly different from our current general board application, where you can apply to any of our boards with the same application, my direction to Mr. Rody, with hopefully, the rest of supportive council, would be to upload it, just like we have our current attachment for an application, but on the page for the youth advisory board, just list their application there. But I would, I would get feedback from Mr. Rody in terms of how quickly we can get that information up and then have a plan for getting it out to our community, because I do think outreach, I mean, I think it's great that we already have people in mind. I do as well. But I think outreach to our community now through the beginning start of the school year for this first year is going to be really important.
Absolutely. We're happy to put this together in a fillable PDF and get it on the website to that comment. We definitely want to advertise this a little bit differently because we don't want anybody to fill out the wrong, you know, right now, we have one standardized one, which sometimes in itself is a chore to get people to fill out correctly. So now, we want to put a little effort into making sure that they're two different applications. So we'll, we'll get rolling on this, and I think the goal is to try to have everything in place so that we can hit the ground running here in September when school starts and hopefully, have a nice applicant pool to move forward with.
Mr. Carey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody, as you may be recruiting members, that this is a sunshine board since it's advisory. Only fact-finding boards are exempt from the requirements of the Sunshine Act, so, you know, they, there will have to be, you know, some formality to it, including taking minutes and including, believe it or not, that they aren't going to be able to talk about the board outside the board meetings. They're, they're subject to the same requirements as you all are in that regard. So just for you to think about as you're talking to members about it or potential members.
I think that's excellent. If they're going to do this, they're going to have to learn about sunshine sooner or later.
And I will, and I will brief them all on the requirements of the sunshine laws. We get members who have signed up for the board, so it's, you know, nothing's going to come to a surprise to them. I'll probably go to the first meeting to have a formal briefing in addition to any conversations that I have outside of that. So, you know, we'll make sure everybody understands the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Volz.
Yes, Mr. Carey, do you have to read this resolution?
No, resolutions don't need to be read by title.
The other question I had is, do you have an idea of like how many or a specific number?
Send me up the information about the board.
Oh, is there?
Seven.
Looking for an ideal of seven.
Seven?
Just like...
Oh, there it is, membership. Sorry, I didn't read back far enough. Okay.
Can you give us a heads up when the application gets approved so we can put it out to the residents?
I would be thrilled to do so.
Thank you.
And I agree, I think you should be the liaison as well. I think that's pretty obvious.
Great job.
Okay, all right.
In my excitement, I forgot to include that we can happily strike the word between from the application, just for the record.
Okay, moving on. We'll go to next item, D, City Attorney Employment Agreement.
Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council, this evening, this agenda item is a follow-up to a previous discussion, going back to last performance review, talking about extension of the city attorney agreement. Before you, I think the action item tonight is to take action on an extension of the agreement or to not take action on the extension of agreement. Put a little bit of background together as well as some of the language in the current city attorney agreement, and so I think with that, I will turn it over, turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frambus?
Thank you, Mayor. If you all bear with me for a little while, I have a statement I had written up. I did quite a bit of research on, on some things. I drove the city crazy with some requests on some documentation. So let me just read my, what I've written up, and if you all have any questions, you can ask me, ask me after. Thursday, June 12, I had a 16 and a half minute conversation with Mr. Carey. I was returning his call from earlier in the day. We had an in-depth conversation about his pending contract. He heard I inquired about the severance clause in his contract and then proceeded to tell me about case law that would be in favor to obtain, or in case law that would be in his favor to obtain even if the contract expired. Conversation was cordial but direct for both of us. He later emailed me a copy of the case law he was referring to. I found the two cases to be inconsistent with the current situation, as one deals with unemployment benefits and the other a collective bargaining agreement, neither of which touch unemployment agreements. The current contract seems clear when severance is paid and when it is not. I believe we should make the best possible decisions for West Melbourne and its residents. That being said, I cannot in good conscience support another contract for this attorney. I believe having confidence, I began having confidence issues with the attorney after he failed to acknowledge his advice to me on residency issues and then proceeded to not recall the conversation when it was discussed at the September 6 council meeting. Moments later, Mr. Rody did confirm that the discussion had taken place in his office. I had asked the city clerk to have the video available of that meeting in case anybody wants to refresh their memory on that. However, I did not just want to base my decision on one note, so I began a deeper look into our attorney's personnel records. Over the past few days, I have requested as many, I have requested as many city records as I could to review the attorney's employment. In short, I believe many red flags have surfaced, and I would like to point them out. Remote work, according to the current city policy, the attorney would not be eligible for remote work. One E of the eligibility criteria is that you must have a supervisor who can monitor or assess productivity. As the council is the attorney's supervisor, sunshine laws would prohibit us from collectively monitoring and assessing his productivity, as it needs to be measurable and quantifiable. Even if we could, in Mr. Carey's email dated June 16, 2026, he describes a remote work environment that does not meet the policy standards. Additionally, in the same email, he pointed out that he has only worked remotely nine times. I have found that from March 17, 2024 through June 6, 2025, there have been 41 cases that represent remote work or misuse of work hours. In 2024, a concerning usage pattern of vacation time has occurred, which is inconsistent with regular normal practices. Mr. Carey has been off 27 days with vacation hours used, with only one of those days utilizing eight hours of vacation time. Each time work hours have been offset, each, excuse me, each time work hours have offset the required eight hours workday. This pattern has occurred in 2023 and continues in 2025. The regular usage pattern is inconsistent with every other employee currently working for West Melbourne. Finally, I took, I looked towards the council and the three completed evaluations of our attorney. Mr. Carey was, has received three average reviews in two and a half years, 3.175 or 3.75, 3.13, and 3.325. Clearly, our city, our residents, and our staff deserve an above-average attorney again. I'm making the motion that council provide Mr. Carey with the required 90 days' notice that we will not be renewing his contract in, at its expiration. I'm also advising Mr. Rody to market the position for acceptable candidates for council's review and future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other? We have a motion, looking for a second. Mr. Gaylord?
Can I ask a question before?
Can we get a second, then you can ask a question?
I'll second with a question.
All right, thank you. Ask your question.
Mr. Frambus, you had mentioned 41 instances of remote work. I know in our email from Mr. Carey on the 16th, he relayed there was nine instances of remote work, but it stated that he believed that if there were any instances that were missed, that Mr. Tom Bradford or another associate of the city may be able to clarify any discrepancies between actual instances of remote work versus the provided instances of remote work in his email. I'm just looking for clarification either from Mr. Carey, Mr. Bradford, or yourself, Mr. Frambus, where those records may be or, or ask it a different, ask it a different way, why the discrepancy is so large between...
I can tell you, Hal, I came across, and then if they want to answer, that's fine. I, I acquired the payroll records.
Your microphone off?
Yes. I acquired the payroll records, key card access, cell phone records, calendar entries, and I also asked for computer access entries, but they, the city couldn't provide that. So most of the incidences are, there was 27 vacation days used. Only one of those vacation days used to complete eight hours. All the other days have split vacation, even weeks-long vacation, during those vacation days, there was some form of work done, whether it was two hours. They range from two hours to six hours. And if you're working when you're on vacation or working away from, I mean, if you're on vacation and you're working, it's remote work. No matter how you look at it, if you're not here, it's remote work. So I have, these are the sheets that I used.
Mr. Frambus, can I ask a follow-up question on that? So you mentioned that your concern here is that he's taking vacation and then working on those vacation days, either, you know, two or three, two to four hours, whatever the timeframe is, is the expectation...
It's inconsistent with what every other employee's doing. It's just one other thing that we're not able to follow up on. You know, I would, I would expect somebody that we're supervising or we only have control to supervision that we either approve these things. It's just an abuse of the system, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
No other employee in West Melbourne is doing it, whether he's working or not, I don't know. If we have so much work that you can't take a vacation and you have to work while you're on vacation, we need to hire extra staff, so...
Yeah, I guess the, the direction I was going with my question is the, is him working on vacation, what you're saying constitutes a violation of the policy for remote work? Is that, is that what you're, is that what the direction that you were headed with your...
Oh, the policy of remote work? I read it in my statement, but I'll read it to you. So the criteria eligibility for remote work, it's, it's a list, but the one, the one that stands out is have supervisors who can monitor and assess productivity. That's one of the criterias, and he doesn't. The other thing that stood out to me is that in remote work environment, it says these tasks should be generally be de minimis in nature. So, so basically, it says that you can have work-life balance, but you shouldn't be working from home if you have things going on around you. Has to be de minimis in nature. He points out in his email to us that he had to stay at home and work because he didn't have anybody to watch the two-year-old, and anybody who watches or has had kids and watches two-year-olds, it's not de minimis in nature. I feel for the childcare issue, but that's not a problem that is our problem. It also, in another incidence, he says that I needed to take my kids to their school, homeschool, co-op, and watch the baby for the day. I mean, if you're not, when you're working from home, you're supposed to be dedicated to work, not running your kids around. Another incidence is, regardless, I don't think it's a proper work.
Sure.
We can go through the whole list.
The other, the other question I had for you, was there in regards to the first instance that you mentioned, the, the issue that you brought up regarding the residency concerns that you'd asked about? that you'd asked about in the previous September council meeting?
September 6th.
Can you provide more clarification on?
He.
Was he just, was it something?
In a meeting with myself, Mr. Rhodey, and Mr. Carey, he gave direction on subpoena, what I had to do to, to put out a subpoena. Not necessarily the direction on how to write it, but what I had to do previously when Mr. Dipmore put out a subpoena. Mr. Dipmore filled it out, gave it to Mr. Carey, Mr. Carey sent it out. However, he didn't, after talking to Morris Richardson and the county attorney, he felt that it would be better if I sent it out myself. So, that was that conversation. When it got brought up on the dais, Mr. Carey conveniently forgot that he had the conversation with me.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And Megan has the video that we, we took. If you want her to put it up on the screen, that's fine.
Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rhodey, I want to ask you a question, because I don't know, you primarily spend more time working with him than, than I ever have. I very rarely work with our city attorney. When, I know at Harris, when I was on vacation, I worked all the time and would call in and do things, but my VP that was in charge of me was okay with that. And, and so I want to kind of get your understanding of what your expectation of the city attorney is when he's on vacation, but whether you still need him to do things or not?
You know, I, I think I'm, I would ask the city attorney to answer that question himself. I mean, it's something that, you know, has been talked about as far as the vacation item, but I do want to clarify that he, he does not work for me. I mean, he, he works for the council. We are equal in the org chart, if you will, but obviously, I'm at City Hall and he's at City Hall, so we're, we, we interact much more than the councils.
So, with respect to the remote work, I guess I would begin by saying, and this isn't necessarily in the contract language, but when I first started, I had a sit-down with Mayor Rose, as well as him, and made clear that I had no intention on working remotely. However, you know, I'd like to reserve the right to occasionally do so when needs provide for it. And as I provided to you, there have been nine instances in, in almost three years. That's about three a year. The last, the last one, I specifically informed you all before, through my email, that I was doing so. I didn't get any pushback, I didn't get any questions, nobody objected. So, you know, to me, something like that is kind of implicit permission to do so. I, I've, I've never been cagey about it, I've never been, tried to hide anything from anybody. As far as the vacation specifically, I am the sole attorney that works for the city. That you, as far as I see it, there are two options. One, I can work remotely to keep up on the day-to-day things that need to get done, so that I don't come back to, you know, 500 emails and, and 40 contracts and, you know, whatever else comes in that, that needs attention. Or I can work on it remotely so that these kind of things get done while I'm gone. The other option would be to hire an outside attorney, which I don't think is a good solution for a very temporary absence, because those things would tend to, to take a while anyways, because they tend not to get done quickly. And also, you know, you lose some continuity. If I had an assistant city attorney, which I'm not asking for, you know, I could obviously turn things over to that person while I'm gone and, and they could keep up with things. As the only attorney for the city, I thought it was the responsible thing for me to do for myself, to avoid getting backed up, as well as for the city taxpayers, to avoid racking up, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars in legal fees, when I can take a few hours in the evening to go through the day's emails, take care of the things that I can immediately take, take care of, put things to the side that may need a little more work, and, and continue to keep up on things. The last thing I would point out in regards to this, because I don't want to sound defensive, is that every single time I've gone on vacation, I have let you know in advance through the email, and I'm, almost every time, I, you know, feel free to go back through your emails and see if I'm wrong about this, I'm very clear that I will take some of that time to take calls, to still attend meetings where I'm needed, and to keep up on the day-to-day tasks. I've never tried to hide that, I've never tried to deny that I do that. And again, you get these emails every month with where I specifically say what days I'm going to be out of town, and that I'm planning to do that. Not once has any member of this council ever pushed back on that, said, I don't think that's appropriate, or said, you know, maybe that's something we should discuss as a group to see if, if you should be doing that. In, in my mind, I'm doing a service to the city by ensuring the work keeps getting done, and that the taxpayers are saving money. If that's something that you all say is not appropriate, then that's certainly a discussion that we can have going forward. I don't think there's any justification for using that as a reason to not renew my contract because I've been so upfront about it and never received any pushback from any one of you. So, that, that's really all I have to say about that, and you can continue your discussion, and thanks for hearing me out.
Mr. Bentley.
Thank you. If I can, Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Frambus a question. Would you rather us hire a separate attorney when someone's out for a week or two on vacation to go through an item that maybe he could do, and I'm making this up now, in half an hour because he has the, the ongoing knowledge of it? I mean, I'm trying to understand that part.
I believe if we have so much work that we can't let our employees go on vacation, ever, I mean, out of 27 days using vacation time, only one was a full eight hours. It's not a practice that we follow in our city.
Yeah, I haven't seen the list prior to now, so are most of the times that we're talking about a few minutes, or is it a half a day, or? Because I, I think if he's on vacation.
If you look on payroll records, column one, it talks about two hours salary, six hours vacation, six salary, four vacations, six salary, two vacation, I'm talking hours here, five salary, three vac, it varies day-to-day, and, and it's almost half that. No other, granted, no other employee does the city attorney job, but we don't allow it. We don't, it, it doesn't, let me correct myself. It's allowed on a case-by-case basis by the director of each department. So, if they had to place a call to somebody who was on vacation, they would credit that person with a half hour worth of work. This is going way beyond that, and our ability to monitor this kind of stuff, and, and he's right, we haven't said anything to him, but this is the first that I've rarely delved into this, and I have a big problem with it. And, and I think it's an abuse of, you know, vacation time, you, you're extending the amount of time you can have off. If you're scheduling a week's vacation, take a week's vacation. And to answer your question, yes, I believe we should either have, if we have that much work going on, we should either hire an assistant attorney or use outside counsel. But it, it's more than that. I, I'm just.
I'm just going by what I've seen here.
I'm just, if you look at, you know, there are things that.
Because.
There's no card swipes on to certain days, you know, there was stuff that I couldn't verify because I didn't have all the information, but.
So, what are you suggesting there, where there's no card swipe? That he didn't come to work that day, is that what?
Well, obviously, you can follow somebody in. You know, there's all kinds of situations. This is not cut-and-dry stuff here, Pat, you know that.
No, I'm not disagreeing, it's just, this is the first time I've seen it, it's 10 minutes ago.
I just, you know, I didn't start on it until I started doing the research either, so, I mean, until it came up, I mean, you know, I wanted to, he mentioned taking cell phone calls when he was away on vacation, and that's very, doesn't happen a lot, not on the, the cell phone, whether, you know, whether he's on his computer. Tom couldn't give me all the, the logins for that because he didn't have the time, because there was 27,000 just in one month or something that he had to go through to give me the one month, let alone a year's worth of information. This is just one year's worth of information.
Do you think we, as a council, should have inquired to, based on what he just?
I think we should do a better job.
Because he did, I, I have seen countless emails where he says, I'm out, but if you need something, I'm here to help. And we knew that as a council, at least I knew that as a council member. And if I needed, I would have taken advantage of it, I just, I don't work with the attorney that much, one-on-one, I'm not sure any of us on the council do.
I don't think this has to be the sole focus. I think our reviews haven't shown that much progression. I mean, why are we going to go into another three-year contract when, when we could see what else is out there? He's free to reapply.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. To first address the question of, yes, he would be free to apply if we chose to advertise it, however, from a human and employment perspective, if I were in his shoes, I don't think, I don't think I would want to take that step, because that's showing that this council does not have the trust in him. And I've looked at the previous evaluations that council has done, recognizing that there were questions, especially in his, his second year with the residency issue. I know a lot of council gave feedback in terms of, that could have been handled better. So, I, I don't disagree with you there. I do think that Mr. Carey continues to have areas of growth that can happen. I think that's something, I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of council, but I know that I've shared those things with him, not only in the evaluations, but just in conversations that we have when I do stop by the city. And for the most part, I do that quite often, and I can't speak for all of the dates on this chart, but he's there almost every time that I pop by, because I tend to have a question or something comes to mind about things that are coming up. I don't, I don't think it's going to be a valuable use of time to go through point-by-point my thoughts. In terms of, of the issues that you have raised, I hear them. I'm going to take a look at, at your attorney records in terms of, of the, the workdays and work hours, but I think when it comes to employment, especially of a city employee, I mean, we hire and fire two of them, right? And we want to make sure that we continue to do that well. Even if we chose to renew him for a three-year contract, what I think, what I think would be good as a council, looking at his evaluations where we've given him recognition for being proactive and communicating, can't speak for the rest of you, but I can tell you, he picks up the phone late at night because I had a question and I may not remember it the next morning. Those things, to me, matter on behalf of our city. Him being available, I do trust the information that he gives us, but I do think what's going to be helpful for him is if we choose to have a three-year contract, I think we have two things to note. One, as a council, we can fire at any time. So, I don't think this is necessarily saying, well, we are quote-unquote stuck with you for three years. There's no other better way to say that, but again, I think if I were in his shoes, man, I, I don't think I'd want to be somewhere where I'm not trusted. And to be clear, I, I do trust our city attorney. But I do think in terms of the questions that you've raised, they are good questions, and I'm sure you've had that conversation with him. I've shared my own thoughts with him when he called the other day, and I think what we should do in terms of if we, if we choose to keep.
To be fair, I have not, because I just came across a lot of this stuff when I was doing the research, so to be fair.
And my feedback was not based on this information, so we can both give him valuable feedback from different perspectives. I think, just taking a look at my notes, hearing the discrepancies from Mr. Frambus, I think those are valuable concerns. I also would inquire to the city attorney in terms of the workload. I don't love the idea of you working on vacation, because that's what vacation is, is, is time away from work. And I understand, I do it as well, we check our emails, we get work done, you know, I, I do that for my day-to-day things, but that's also valuable family time. And so, I don't know what that looks like in terms of a work-life balance, in terms of, do we need to hire? Do, how, you know, would it detrimentally, and this is my question, I know I'm asking multiple questions of multiple people, but in terms of Mr. Rhodey, would that detrimentally hurt the city for the days that he is away to not have someone? Because I know adding an additional person in the legal department may be expensive, and I don't necessarily want to take on that unless it's really truly needed. But in reality, what do other cities do? Hold on, because I'm going to lose my train of thought, I just need you to have that question in mind. But I think, I think he does good work for the city. I think he's ethical. I think what we should do as a council to be, you know, in that hierarchy, to be a better feedback section and also kind of oversight, is providing better structure if we're noticing these are gaps that we are not comfortable with. I don't think it's fair, and this is just one person's opinion, to say, here's things that we have issues with, you know, that follow this policy, but we're not including it in your evaluation. We're choosing to move forward in a different direction without giving you time to either address them or make changes based on that feedback. I think those are all of my thoughts. Thank you. And if you guys would take a stab at those questions, I'd appreciate it.
As far as what do other communities do, you know, I, I'm not sure what, you know, we, we've, we've had this conversation about the uniqueness of our size, right? We're large enough to have an in-house attorney, but we're not Melbourne or Palm Bay where they have an office of attorneys. And so, I don't believe.
But he does have an assistant. I don't know what percentage of that work gets done by Christine versus has to wait for the city attorney.
You, you know, certainly, we have that position, you know, I'm, I'm probably as guilty as others, you know, you, someone takes a vacation, things look calm and, calm and, and winding down, and something breaks, right? Some, some, some event happens, and so, need legal advice, and so we reach out. If the council doesn't, would like to see the city attorney take vacation and hire outside counsel, I, I think that's clear direction. If they're comfortable with the way that he's been doing, I think that's clear direction. But as far as a standard, as far as how do communities with our size with one city attorney, there, there probably isn't, because just like myself, just like chief, just like Tom, when, regardless of vacation or not, when something big happens, we all rally and come up with a solution.
So, when you, when you rally on vacation, does your numerical breakdown look the same?
I, I do not, but I have the advantage of having a big staff, right? I, I have an amazing assistant city manager, I have a police chief, I have a finance director, I have people, I have John, our city attorney, right? I have, I'm a ma, I'm, I'm made aware of the crisis, they've already been working on a plan, a solution, they get my input, and they execute, right? So, I, it's a different situation for me, because there isn't, I'm not the only person at the city who can do something. Whereas we, you know, we, we have had issues while John was on vacation with a development agreement that was falling apart, that we all needed to rally on to keep alive. Those things happen. Other times, it's, you know, more infrequent of questions. So, again, it's really more to the council. If the council would rather see us hire an outside counsel, we've had a longstanding relationship with Cliff Repinger's firm, whose name is escaping me, but his firm has a backup for the city, and we'd rather go, you know, we'd rather just use the backup attorney, I think, to Whiteburg.
Well, I would like to see us follow our own policy, because I think that's important, but I don't want it to be to the detriment of the city if we're expecting that to be a significant dollar amount. I don't know from a legal fees standpoint what that looks like.
It's 300 an hour for outside counsel, so.
There's no, there's no connection between city attorneys, like there are with police departments, where we can call up another, come on, I'm trying to think outside the box here. No, in all reality, we, we don't have those relationships where we can't call another city attorney and say, we need this one thing, because it's the emergency thing.
We, we could reach out to Melbourne, Palm, well, Melbourne and, and other communities that have in-house attorneys, and we could, we could see if we could get kind of a mutual, essentially a mutual aid agreement, you know, hey, we've got this issue. You know, hey, we've got this issue, you know, can you give us some guidance?
I would love to see that regardless of the direction that we go because I think that's good coverage for our city.
The, somewhat a little bit more complic- you know, on, on certain things straightforward, on other things, a little more complicated. One of the things with an attorney is they're representing their position and have to represent that position. And so might be a good idea for when you're just looking for some guidance on something. Might not be a good idea if it's, it's something critical that could be liable to the city. And, and so we, we'd have to look into those parameters, but I, to answer your question, I don't know that there's a standard set, you know, hard rule on, on that for sole city attorney who's, who's a, a city employee but works at the direction of the council.
I, I'd like to briefly address that if I could because I am the only, we are the only city in Brevard County that has, that's big enough to have an in-house attorney, but not to have an office of attorneys. Every other city that has in-house has at least two attorneys. I, I, just thinking about how it would work out in practice, I think it would be a nightmare to have an outside counsel come in while I'm gone for a number of reasons. One, which is how does staff know to get work to the, to that person? How do we keep track of what goes to him versus what comes to me and to make sure we're not both working on the same thing? How do we make sure things don't slip through the cracks because, you know, I think he's working on something he thinks I am? And in, in general, I don't need help. I can keep up with my work. Obviously, if there was a policy that I couldn't keep up with my work on vacation, that would change things because then I would come back to, you know, 500 emails and, and 50 taskers that I would need to work on. And I'd spend the next month and a half trying to dig out from that hole. That's one of the advantages in my mind of being able to get in a few hours here and there on vacation. And, you know, I'll also tell you, I've, I've, I've zoomed into planning and zoning from Paris, you know, and, and it's at night, so it's not an impact to family. It's after the kids go to bed. And that's usually when I get most of my work done. I'll check things in the morning, see if there's anything that came in that needs immediate attention. And then I try to put in a, a couple hours at night or maybe a little more depending on, on what's needed. And all of my hours that I work, I, I account for it fairly. I don't pad my hours. You know, if I'm working two hours, then I'm working two hours and I'll, and I'll count that. If I have a Zoom meeting and, you know, they can tell you I've had plenty of Zoom meetings from vacation because, you know, I, I need to be involved in things. And I don't see the harm in that. You know, I, I think it would work a lot better than having a policy that I can't do that because we'd lose so much continuity. I would lose so much continuity of knowing what's going on in my office. It would be, I think, very difficult and unworkable. And I would definitely prefer not to have that as a policy. However, you all set policies and, you know, have to do what you think is best for the city. All I will reiterate is once again that I've never been deceptive about the way I've handled things. I've always let you know that I'd be working on things and keeping up on things while I'm gone. And this is the first time I've ever heard any pushback. So, thank you.
If you don't mind addressing the last question that I had asked, I don't know what the workload looks like for your office compared to what you're able to complete versus your assistant.
So she works on things that, that are appropriate for a paralegal or an assistant to work on. Ultimately, as an attorney, I'm responsible for, under the, the standards of our profession, for everything that comes out of our office. So while she can sometimes, you know, one of the examples that she does is when we have a surety come in, you know, a, a bond, you know, she'll help to look into the, the background of the surety and, and make sure that they're rated properly under the city code, things like that. Ultimately, though, when it comes to the bond language, I'm reviewing that because, you know, that's clearly a duty that an attorney needs to handle. And so, you know, it depends on every, every specific issue, you know, how much she can handle or not. But ultimately, everything that goes out of, out of our office has to be reviewed and approved by me, even if she can do some of the legwork. And again, you know, from a workload perspective, it's fine as it is. I don't need an assistant. And I, I think that trying to work out some sort of policy where we have to go to outside counsel would be extremely difficult and unworkable and wouldn't be helpful to me or the city in my mind.
Ms. Volz, you have been very patient.
Yes, I have. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Frampton, you were the only person that voted no originally to hire Mr. Carey, correct?
No, I think I voted yes to hire Mr. Carey.
You voted no.
Did I? We only had three candidates and we didn't.
I know. This is.
Saw it.
Yeah. Anyway, this, well, Mr. Carey knows, you know.
The city clerk is already working on verifying that in the minutes. It was November.
You think I voted no for you?
I'm certain you did. Yeah.
So this seems personal to me, the things that you're bringing up.
I can assure you that it's definitely not personal and that's why I went the extra step on trying.
Okay, well, whatever.
The one, the one thing.
Whatever the case is, to me, it seems personal. And I think we need to just renew Mr. Carey's contract for three years.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, I just, actually, the more I think about it, the more that I'm almost not willing to suggest what I was thinking. What would this look like if we did this for the previous attorney? Did we allow Mr. Richardson to work from home or work while he's on vacation? Does everybody have that answer?
I would have to double-check. I believe Attorney Morris and I only overlapped 60 days or so. I don't even think it was, I think, one of the first weeks I was in the chair, the county manager called me to say that they were going to try to steal him. So I think, and it, as I recall, it happened pretty quick.
Good question. Now, I mean.
Yeah, I.
Like to know that answer.
I know I was allowed to in my previous thing, but I.
I don't know if maybe Tom Bradford has any recollection.
Good evening. So the time that I would point out that Mr. Richardson, I'm, I'm certain of, worked from home was after he had some surgery and was on medical. Certainly had the capability to work remote. I, I don't have any records, one way or the other, at this point to know that, but I know that he certainly had the capability and he did on, on occasion.
But if he was on vacation, did he keep?
I don't know. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I'd like to have, before I ever did an action, I'd want to have those answers. All right, thank you.
Mr. Frampton.
Can I just point out, and Mr. Carey, you could verify this for a night, but you said that you, when you were in Paris, you got on, that's remote work. So I mean, that qualifies.
And I'm not.
Everything I looked at, I'm just saying that the nine instances you point out, I found a lot more.
Yeah, to be clear, when I was talking about remote work, it was times when I've been in town and haven't come in either for part of a day or full day. The majority of those were just a part of a day. You know, an inspector was coming and I needed to be at home to let them in, something like that. It was especially relevant my first year because my wife was working. And so, you know, people need to be home at, at certain times. Again, it was a handful. I think it was three or four, you know, times over the first year, and most of those were partial days for something like that.
That wasn't what I was.
Yeah, so.
When I said 41 times, that.
Right, and.
That was not what I was referring to.
Right, and that's what I was referring to when I said nine. If you want to say 41 includes vacation time, again, I've been perfectly clear that I do this. I've been, I tell you every single month in the email that I send out that I'll be working on vacation. And again, not once has anybody, including you, pushed back on that. So, you know.
Policy and all that, you know, I, I.
And I don't see how it makes sense for the city to hire an outside counsel for $1,200 to cover a meeting that I could do in the evening from an Airbnb, you know, just as well. And, and the other thing I would just remember, remind you, you guys meet once every other week. I have board meetings every week of the year outside of the rare fifth week of the month where the fifth week fall, or there's a fifth Tuesday. Now, some of those get canceled, especially Board of Adjustment, so they don't always happen. But, you know, a policy that I couldn't zoom into one of those meetings would be a policy that I can never leave town, you know, over the course of a week, basically, which I don't think is the intent of the, the vacation policy or the, you know, people being able to use their vacation time. I, I've never been a secret, take, made it a secret about when I'm going to be using vacation. I always let you know in advance and I've always let you know that I'm going to be keeping up on things while I do. Again, this is the first time I've had pushback on this. And I, I think the pushback is irrational, to be perfectly honest with you. I think I've done a good job for the city keeping up on things. I think, you know, the city manager can attest to that I make myself available when I need to. I don't think it takes away from my family time. I think it's a good use of city resources to allow me to do that rather than hiring an outside attorney. And I think it's a good use of my own time so I can maintain continuity with my own workload. So it, I, I, again, I, I would really like to maintain the status quo on that, but you could certainly approve a contract extension and, and bring that issue back later for a decision. You know, I, I mean, but in my mind, I, I think it's a mutually beneficial arrangement and, and having outside counsel come in for a week if I'm out of town would be unworkable and make things exceedingly difficult for me.
Ms. Adams.
I hear you, and I'm sorry if my idea would put more work on you versus less. That's not my intent. My intent was thinking if we have mutual agreements with other areas of our city that benefit our city, how could it not benefit us from the legal perspective? But I am not an attorney.
I mean, I, I could reach out to Adam at Melbourne and, and see, you know, how receptive he is to something like that, handle some of the, the day-to-day things that come up. I, I know we've done it in the past specifically with RPOs. When, when they come in and you're out of town, somebody needs to cover the hearing. And I know when Morris was here, he said Laura Moody would occasionally do that when he couldn't. But those have also gone to being available via Zoom. So those are now, ever since I've, since COVID, basically, they're almost always a Zoom hearing or a phone call. So, you know, again, if I needed somebody in person, I would obviously have to reach out and find somebody, but that generally doesn't happen anymore.
So to be clear, my suggestion and idea were based on emergency things that could not occur while you were out on vacation. I don't, again, I can't speak from an attorney perspective, but there are plenty of things from a work perspective that if they don't get done on Monday, they're going to get done on Tuesday. If they don't get done on Tuesday, they will get done at some point. And yes, there are things that have to be prioritized. There are emergencies that pop up. The emergencies and more priority things that you haven't already thought about before you left, those are the things that I would imagine somebody would need to step in last minute. Otherwise, you know, I would look towards Mr. Rhodey of what sort of things are just okay to leave for a few days while you're on vacation, and then they get done when you get back. Because that's how, if you're not working remote, you know, other jobs operate in terms of vacation time. I, I do want to ask for the good of this council. You know your work schedule best. Mr. Rhodey, I would attest, I think, or at least would attest to knowing your work schedule probably better than council, even though, yes, we do get your emails in terms of when you'll be there, when you'll be out. You know, you guys have a much closer working relationship than I believe you currently have with council. How would you address the concerns that are being raised?
I would.
I would say not as a group, but they're still being raised, that are solid questions to ask.
I, I would suggest specifically with attendance, if that's what you're driving at, that I let you know every single time I'm going to be out of the office. If there's a last-minute thing that comes up, that's a, you know, that draws me out that I, I'm not aware of beforehand, I'll let Christine and Tim know. They always know where to find me. And the idea that, you know, that seems to be being implied that, you know, some days I just don't key into the office is completely false. If, if you don't know that I'm there and if, then I'm there, you know, meaning if I haven't let you know in advance that I'm there, you know, there, if there's a discrepancy, I can tell you there was a few days timeframe where I misplaced my badge and had to have Wanda let me in every time. And, and maybe that explains what he found. I don't know. That was probably a two or three-day period. And beyond that, I'm every, I'm there every day I'm supposed to be. And, you know, you've got 100 witnesses at City Hall. You can pull whatever records you want. I have absolutely nothing to hide in that regard. I am there every day unless I let you know I'm not going to be or a last-minute thing like calling in sick. And I've probably only called in sick five times since I've been here for that. You know, it's not something that happens very often. So I, I have nothing to hide and I've, I've seeked, I've sought to do everything that I've done here with honor and integrity and honesty. And I've, I have in no way taken advantage of the city. Everything I've done has been properly accounted for and, you know, do whatever investigation you want because you're not going to find anything.
My last question, because I wasn't entirely done there, and I just have to ask, regardless of how we decide to move forward today, do you still wish to continue serving the city and serving it behalf of this council?
I would love to continue serving the city and this council if I'm wanted. If, if you don't want me anymore, then I, you know, I, I will be happy to, not happy to, it'd be very disappointing, but I will mutually part ways and, you know, work on an exit plan. But my desire is to continue on here as long as you'll have me, and I, I hope that's what we can, I continue to do moving forward. I, I do recognize, you know, from feedback from you, that there are things I can probably work on. And, you know, I will continue to do so. And I welcome any feedback you all have. Please feel free to, you know, call me anytime with positive or negative feedback. I will take it. I will listen. And I'll try to improve. But yeah, my request is to extend my contract and I certainly hope that I will have the full, or at least nearly full of the support of the council in doing so. Thank you.
Mr. Frampton.
I just wanted to point out that my concerns were not irrational. It was a comprehensive review of your records, and that's, that's what's on the sheet. I made an inquiry with whether anybody else does this in the city, and it doesn't happen. I, I, I would, I probably agree with you that getting outside counsel is not the way to go, but I would fully support an assistant if that's what we need to do. If we need an assistant attorney, you know, maybe we can find some new attorney that won't need as much money. I don't know. If that's, if that's the route we want to go. A trainee. Yes.
That's what we want.
So, I mean, I'm okay with options and, and again, I, you know, I.
Well, probably when Mr. Frampton finishes or, I know we have a motion and we have a second on the floor. We're going there. All right, we're calling the question then. All those, if there's a motion on the floor. There's no more, there're more, there's more lights on. So the question has been called. All right.
Can you clarify what the question is so everybody knows what they're voting on?
I'm doing that right now.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor to, not to extend, but to give Mr. Carey the 90-day notice and to direct the city attorney to, to advertise to look for another attorney. Is that correct? Is that the, is the motion? All right. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right. Motion fails 6-1. Okay, let's move on to council reports.
I think, would anybody like to make a, a different motion?
That's right. We do have to resolve this at some point, do we not? All right, so Ms. Volz. Yes, I would like to make a motion that we renew the contract for Mr. Carey, three-year contract. And in the meantime, give us some information on, from Tim regarding, you know, his, or I guess, I guess, John, you could look at those things as far as, you know.
Is this in the motion?
Time off and all that.
Is this in the motion? Are you making a motion?
Yes, that's what I, that's what I was thinking, yes.
Okay, I need a motion.
Okay, I, I'm just going to make a motion that we renew the three-year contract for Mr. Carey.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Volz. Is there a second? Mr. Gaylord.
I'll second the motion.
Second from Mr. Gaylord. Okay, all those in favor of renewing the contract signify by saying aye.
I had questions.
Questions.
Questions. Mr. Bentley.
Again, some of this caught me a little bit off guard. Is there a possibility of doing less than a three-years contract? Or is that not something the council would want to look at? That's a question, so.
And anyone.
Okay. Mayor, let's answer. Thank you.
Well, to Diana's earlier point, we're not stuck with Mr. Carey for the full three years, right? I mean, granted, it could have been phrased better than that, but we're, I mean, so to your, to your point, I think there is a possibility there where, you know, if we just want to retain him for a year or two, then we have that ability. if we just want to retain him for a year or two, then we have that ability just offhand.
We do have that option. I mean, you know, we put in-
Okay, hold on, I've got lights on here for people speaking, so Ms. Adams has the floor.
My comments were not in related to that, so I can wait if Ms. Volz has comments to that.
Oh, I have another light on here. I have Mr. Bentley's light on.
Right, but I think if you do it as you're suggesting, it gets expensive because you're not doing it at the contract end, and you have to do it for cause. And then he gets a large payout as a result, maybe, I think, is the way that process works. Whereas if you had a, and I'm not saying to do this, I'm just asking a question. If you had a shorter contract, you could readdress this and see if things got better in a year. And if not, you could say, okay, you know, I'm making up numbers. We let a year go by, didn't seem to get better, or, because I think the council has some responsibility too here, that we need to do a better job. And, but to measure it, I was thinking maybe they don't want to wait three years or pay a lot of money, that if you just made a shorter contract, a year and a half, whatever, then you could address this without going through a large payout. Thank you.
I believe we have the possibility to extend the current contract, don't we? Mr. Rhodey?
Mr. Rhodey, is there a legal difference in terms of giving him a shorter contract versus extending the current contract?
No, I think the standard, you know, in my time in doing this is, you know, a year is about as short as you'd want to go, obviously less than that. And we're doing this, and, you know, in three, four months, we're doing this again. And then three years is about as long as you'd go, because, again, councils are going to, council situation, staff are all going to change. And so three years, you know, I've seen one to three-year extensions is-
So could we make it two? One to three? My understanding from a previous conversation is that hyphen is between?
Between one and three.
I'd make it two. Ms. Adams, your light, did you want to-
Yes, thank you. I did. In regards to looking at the current contract, be it an extension, be it a new contract, is there a way that we can currently, and I know we do this in regards to our evaluations that are currently later in the year, those evaluations, regardless of how long either we extend or we add a new contract, those will, other than this discussion, line up with the evaluation, correct?
So if you were to do a two-year extension, since you mentioned two, regardless of that, he has a performance review that is due in November on his three-year anniversary. And so if there were a two-year contract extension, it would be an extension from November, which is when his contract ends.
Okay, thank you.
So it wouldn't be from this evening, it would be from when the contract ends. And the contract ends November 29th.
Understood, thank you.
All right, so the recommendation, all right. Okay, well, I was going to chime in here. I was actually going to speak. Like, I don't do that enough of that already. So I would not like to see us go out and have, and go out to another legal firm during the time that he's off. If he's willing to work while he's on vacation, answer his emails, keep on top of things, and not have to come back to, as he said, hundreds of emails. We know that that can happen. I would much rather do that than go through the expense of calling Whitebird or what other company there has to be. The issues that I've had with Mr. Carey have nothing to do with what he does for us at work. It's a whole different thing, and I'm just having to work through it. The other issues that we had, as you brought up, Mr. Francis, that, again, that's just something else. I keep that in a little pigeonhole. The work that he's done for us over the time that he's been through here, and the reports that we get from him every month as to what he's doing, I think he's done a very good job at that. We've not wound up in court, we've not lost a lawsuit, a significant lawsuit, since I think the one that he inherited the second day or so that he was here, that he had nothing to do with. So I don't really have any issues with that. I as well, I think we're going down the right track. Again, if it would be less than three years, that would be fine, because he will have performances coming up. That'll give him time to redeem or whatever it is that he needs to do. In the eyes of council, I think we could do that. And if he wants to stay, and he's already said that he does, so then I think we're on a much better track now. So, that being said, and we have a motion to renew from Ms. Volz, and we have a second from Mr. Gaylord. Do you have a question, Mr. Gaylord?
Do we need to-
State the term?
Amend the emotion, amend the motion, because the original motion was, I believe, for three years.
My motion was for a three-year contract.
And I believe in discussions with council, we were-
That's a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bentley?
I would ask Ms. Volz if she would consider amending the motion to a two-year term so that we can both do a better job of what we're supposed to be doing, both council and the attorney.
Okay. All right, so the motion then is to renew the contract for two years. And Mr. Gaylord, do you keep your second? And we have a second from Mr. Gaylord. All in favor of renewing the contract for two years signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Okay, what else can we get into? Council reports, Ms. Volz?
Yes, I'm up first. I had my first meeting with the Commission on Aging, and it was very interesting. There was a gentleman that spoke, and I didn't get his card. But his company does testing, blood testing for cancer. Now, you have, maybe you've never had cancer or whatever, but it catches those small amounts of cancer that could potentially be in your future.
Who was this, was that, this was your speaker?
Yes, he was our speaker. He was very, very interesting. And I need to go back and get his information, because it was, you know, being a nurse myself, looking at some of the testing that he talked about doing, and they're trying to get Medicare to approve it. And it costs, the test itself costs like $1,000. And some companies are actually doing that, and they have found potential cancers in people. And it's just, it's just been incredible. And so when I get more information, I am going to bring it back to y'all. And then I went to Dick Blake's funeral, and that was, that was very nice. It was very, very crowded. And of course, he was serving on council up there when I served on Palm Bay City Council, you know, like 40 years ago. So we were always together at the League of Cities dinners and all those kind of things. I knew him very well. And then went to the League of Cities dinner last week, and he did a good job, Mayor, for us. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, just a comment. Thanks to all those that had anything at all to do with the dinner that we had last week, representing the city of West Melbourne. It was really a class act, nice event, creates everything. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Gaylord?
Well, Pat stole my thunder, so I don't have anything to report.
All right, Ms. McGuire?
I would just want to say that I got a lot of compliments on how the League of Cities dinner went last week. And actually, talking with the people afterward, or talking with promised afterwards, they actually hired, or brought in, and not hired. There was a chef that actually volunteered his time to come in and to basically make all of the food and to help them prepare that. And it was, it was quite delicious. So I heard a lot of good things about our dinner last week.
Wow, great. Mr. Francis?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
I will echo, League of Cities was very well done. Thank you to staff for making that a seamless event from start to finish. We did recognize multiple scholarship recipients, as I had mentioned earlier in our meeting. I had brought up at the board meeting prior to the dinner, because we do meet beforehand, that I feel that process with not only outreach to potential scholarship recipients, but also communicating with cities, making sure that that application is easier for our students. I just suggested some ideas on how to make that process better. And I share that here because I feel like there's usually a very small window of time where we can come back to this council and share it with our residents, share it with you guys to try to get the word out there, and then boom, the application is due. And we've already, you know, the window has closed and things move on. So we are currently looking at and exploring at the next board meeting, moving that timeline and trying to give students more time, giving city representatives more notice to get that ball moving, to try to reach more students. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that timeline may be changing, pending direction from the rest of the Board of Directors. And if we decide to move that, information will be coming about next year's program. I did want to ask Mr. Rhodey, I know we had worked on some additional ceiling with the sidewalk pilot program, and so I just wanted to check where that was, being as currently it's summer, and I know it's really hot and it gets lots of sunlight, but we do have school starting at the end of the summer, and then I will address my other things.
Yes, I believe we identified four additional crosswalks to paint. And the crews, now that school's done, will be getting their paintbrush out.
I'm so excited, thank you. A reminder to council that we do have the Florida League of Cities information that was just emailed out within the past 24 hours regarding the conference that's coming up in August. So if you are choosing to go, just make aware. It tends to fill up very quickly, same thing with hotel reservations. But then my last two notes are, one, a quick apology to Ms. Volz. I, when I'm speaking, I always look to the majority of council, and I didn't, I think about it every time after a meeting, that I should really say something, and I feel bad that you are the only one to my left, so I speak to the majority. That's okay. I'm really sorry. I will try to do better about speaking more generally in the middle here. And the last note that I had was, I just would like to make sure that council remembers as we're moving forward and we voted to keep the city attorney and to move that contract, feedback is invaluable, I think, for any employee. And so we have that responsibility as council. I think we've identified areas that we can do better in providing that feedback for him. And I think he has recognized in conversations, probably with many of us, that there are areas to address. And so I don't think those things should be, you know, swept under the rug and then brought up again at the next evaluation. Things that need to be addressed, let's have those conversations so we can see growth now so that our next evaluation becomes a true evaluation of what we feel he's providing for the city, rather than waiting. Those are just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, same thing, League of Cities was very nice. Thank you, staff, for all of the work that was done. And then I guess I should be looking over at Megan, because I know that's where all the work came from. Megan and her little minions, I know that's where all the work came from. Thank you, it was absolutely beautiful. So thank you for doing an excellent job. Mr. Rhodey, since it's been mentioned that school is starting, do you think the little fish will get painted on Wingate on the other crosswalk?
Yes, now that school is out, Public Works plans to do the rest of the intersections that we identified.
Okay.
The rest of the, I said intersections, strike that? Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, okay.
Not intersections, not yet.
Yeah, they're different. Okay, all right, that's, that's all, that's all for me as well. So management reports, Mr. Rhodey?
I gave her another idea. Just real brief-
Are you complaining that I bring too many ideas? Is that what I heard from the other side?
No, no, no. We're going to need to buy more paint if we're doing intersections. Just real brief, kudos to our HR Director, Jen Kern, and her team. We had a phenomenal health fair, and then following the health fair, we tried something, she tried something a little out of the box. We had a dermatology bus at City Hall for a day, and employees had an opportunity to visit a dermatologist. It was through our health insurance, and so the employees who visited did their copay, and they got to have an appointment right there, nice and close. I think it was a really clever, out-of-the-box idea. It was the first time, I actually signed up just to show support for the idea. It was the first time I had visited a dermatologist, and it went very well. And we identified some things, and I'm very appreciative. That's part of a big effort that HR Director Kern and her team has been working with, with Lunch and Learns about financial advising and future planning and taking care of parents who are elderly. And I, I, some of that stuff gets lost, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that, really proud of her for doing some of those ideas. Water plant, water plant, water plant. Every day, something new is happening on site. If you are ever in that neck of the woods, and feel free to drive down the road and take a look. Constantly, crews are working, and so please keep an eye on it. We are filming it, if you will, as far as progress, to be able to put something together at the end. That'll show the progression, but just a fun project to keep an eye on. And last but not least, we talked about a follow-up workshop for the community center. And so with the gap between this meeting and next meeting, I'll have Megan reach out and try to identify another morning session, if that works for everyone's schedule, to get back together and talk about some community center ideas. And then we finally have now a rendering for the council chambers. And we want to get council buy-in on what that's going to look like and function. And now's the time to tweak anything. And so we have some of those things ready to go, and so another workshop would be great to plow through those items.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things real quick. This is my last update for the year on reminding you to fill out your ethics disclosures that you have to do annually. The due date is June 30th. Please do it before then. You will get fined by the Commission on Ethics if you don't timely file it. Also, I noticed the invitation for the League of Cities Conference went out today. I also know that many of you have already registered. If you have, there's an ethics training course there that I highly recommend. And you are required to take four hours of ethics training every year as a city councilperson. I know most of you already know this, and you can do it online if you want, but there's also the option at the conference, and it's more interactive, and I think it's probably a better course. But some of your colleagues that have been through it can speak to that better than I could. And finally, just wanted to give you an update in the interest of making sure I'm improving communications with you all, that we have the property on Minton, that was the former Minton Grove site that we're in the, under contract to purchase. The title commitment did come back with a mineral rights reserve to the state. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about that, because it may seem counterintuitive, but mineral rights are actually superior to development rights. Meaning that if whoever owns the mineral rights can essentially stop you from developing the property, and they have absolute access to the property to dig for their minerals. In this case, the state has the mineral rights. I have reached out to the state board that handles their land. They said they don't release mineral rights, but they do provide a right of entry which will allow us to use the property as we desire. That does have to be approved by the cabinet. And I'm letting you know this now, because the next cabinet meeting, they only meet once a quarter, is September 17th, which is also the day that we have scheduled for second reading of the budget. And that's important, because when you have something on the cabinet agenda, we want a representative there. I've been to one before for another client that I had, where we had a land issue that we were having the state release to us. And it's one of those things where it's pretty perfunctory, it's all scripted, there generally aren't any issues. But if the governor or the attorney general or the CFO has a question about your application, and they throw it out to the audience, is there a representative here? You need somebody there, right? Chances are, that's not going to happen, they'll just approve it. But, so I say that to, just to set up the conversation for if we may need to move the second reading back a day as well because of that conflict. Because, again, even though we probably won't have to say anything, we definitely want a representative in the room. So nothing that needs to be decided today, but I just wanted to throw that out there so that it doesn't become a last-minute issue that we have to deal with. So, and that's all, otherwise it's going well. And we're trying to get on the, I'm actively trying to get on the agenda for the next cabinet meeting so that we can get that cleared up before we finalize- for the next cabinet meeting so that we can get that cleared up before we finalize the purchase. Thank you.
Mr. Frambus.
Did Minton Grove have to go through that process as well?
I asked the applicant for the Minton Grove project, and she said that they hadn't done anything for it, which kind of surprised me because their title commitment would have revealed that too. I don't know if their intention was to ignore it, assuming that the state would never come in and exercise their mineral rights. Obviously, that's a pretty dangerous thing for a developer though, especially when they're planning on selling fee simple parcels because every one of those fee simple parcels, that would have identified in their title searches. So I think it may have been an oversight on their part, and it's an oversight that I don't want us to make. So we're trying to clear it up before we finalize everything.
Did they tell you what minerals that...
No, but it's usually phosphate, yeah.
Ms. McGuire.
About that September date, if there's, since the next time we meet isn't for a month, if there's a chance that we're going to touch that date, could we do it now? That way we're not two months out.
Yeah, Attorney Carey and I just talked about that this evening. If you could just give us a couple of days, because what we could do is, you know, try to figure out who's going to represent us and try to get our arms around that. Typically, you know, we had talked about, you know... Yeah, if there wasn't a council meeting, it would probably be the city attorney and myself or the city attorney and the mayor. But obviously, that's not going to work. But that's also kind of prime vacation time. So we got to take a look at the calendar. And we also, what I was mentioning to the attorney earlier is, we all, I'm hesitant to change the date because we have to make sure we're not on the school board or the county state either. So we, we just need to get our arms around it.
Their cycle is on the other week this year. So I don't think that'll be a problem coordinating with them. But, you know, obviously, we can work through this offline. If, I was just trying to notify you all so that you can, you know, if it comes up later, you know, we all had proper notice.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. In regards to sessions, since legislative session has now wrapped up, I know that the League of Cities, right before our meeting, sent out their kind of recap on some things that have happened. Will you be giving us your own recap in terms of things you feel are impacting the city at the next meeting or the one following?
I would expect it to be the July meeting, yeah. I always wait for the end of session and for the league recap because it's a tremendous tool. And, you know, they do the legwork in providing it, and so we should take advantage of it. This session obviously went longer than normal, significantly longer. And usually, I would have done that at this meeting, but because of that, it'll probably be next meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. McGuire. Okay, no other questions? All right, we are wrapped up, I'm out of paper, motion, we are, sorry, we are adjourned.